Crystal, do we have a quorum, please?
Yes, sir. Councilman Gillian, Councilmember Rennenbaum, Councilmember Prummel, and Mayor Bruce Young are all present for the special meeting. And Mr. Councilmember Canturis is absent.
Okay, thank you. Would you all please join me in rise? Moment of silence and join me in the pledge, please. Thank you. Join me in the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number one, to discuss and take actions, consider all matters. I'm sorry, before we get into that. Item number two, executive session, we will not be discussing tonight. So the only item we have before us tonight is item number one. Item number one, to consider all matters incident and related to approving and authorizing publication and posting of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation in an amount not to exceed $8.5 million for the purpose of paying contractual obligations to be incurred for acquiring, renovating, improving and equipping an existing building for public safety facilities, judicial facilities, a city hall, and municipal facilities for administrative offices for city departments responsible for designated infrastructure, including streets, roads, parks, water, and wastewater utilities, information technology systems and cybersecurity, and various other city departments, and professional services rendered in connection with such projects and the financing thereof, including the adoption of a resolution pertaining thereto. Mr. Grimes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as we've discussed a couple of times, we have an opportunity to purchase the building that we're in at 120 El Chico. This building would serve several different functions. Most notably, we'll be moving court over here in addition to what we have now. We have a public safety component here. We have public works here. We just moved Michelle into her office last week. And so the building is, we have the opportunity to purchase the entire building. We would assume a couple of leases from the current tenants. We are working on getting copies of those leases pending this notice going out. We do not have a final sales contract as of yet. There's a couple, nothing price-wise. There's just a couple discrepancies on the financing that Pat wanted to flesh out. And we'll have that for you guys at a subsequent meeting. And so this is pretty much the notice of intent issued debt not to exceed 8.5. I do not think we will be close to that number, but I wanted to put a little cushion in. We have Eric Mahah with Hilltop Securities here tonight. Eric has done the preliminary work on this project. Would you like to come up and kind of go through some of the numbers real quick?
The mayor council has mentioned Eric Mahah. I believe in your package, there are a few different attachments. Go ahead and type action to give the first step. Their provision for certificates of obligation. Notice in the resolution, there really were four key components. One, the not-for-profit amount, which I mentioned, is equivalent to 8.5 million. That structure produced approximately $8.1 million in dollars to the city at the table shown in the plan, with some cushion, but not just these 8.5. You also noticed the repayment term as stated in the resolution is currently outlined with a dedication for 40 years. You don't have to go 40 years. That decision may closer to actually price the certificates instead of the rate. And then really, the other two components in the resolution include the project list that the mayor outlined in opening remarks. You can see the list of the projects there, they're outlined in the resolution. Also, the key date that the council would re-approve those certificates in the final form, and that's typical for me. You may recall, in the past, it comes as when you issue certificates, that notice before council, this evening, will go to the newspaper. And we have 40 to 6 days from that first newspaper publication until council review. So we just get that from May 30th in this case. And so you were saying the not-for-profit amount, you're giving us the option to move forward, and then looking at price. We would bring that to council on this 23rd in this case. And then, in the fact, I can quickly walk through some of the numbers. There are two variations, the 40-year and the 30-year. The first page here on the screen, this is a listing of the city's existing debt. It's total of $53 million in principal outstanding. The city made payments this past year worth about $53, $54 million outstanding. You can see some of the call dates coming forward. The city would have the option to retire more early or refinance at this time. Very high-level summary of the existing debt. The next page is a sample amortization schedule. The one on the screen here, the 30-year, the payable annual payments. Keep in mind, these are preliminary interest rates based on current market, with some cushion, we're estimating around $550,000 annual debt service for the 30-year scenario. The next few pages, we just layer in the existing debt of the city. As you may be familiar, the city currently supports its existing debt for four different revenue streams. We have water, sewer, drainage, and the INF actuarial. So really, the next few pages take the 8.5 million and layer it in to one of those repayments streams. The version one on top, the notice for the 8.5 million is shown on the INF side compared to the water side. And that's purely for those reasons, the tenants supporting the INF going forward. And then you can see the actual debt of the city. This includes all leases and certificates of bond that are outstanding. Full picture of the city's outstanding debt broken out to the different states. And then the very top page, the package for the group back is just a sample calendar. The council blew over the city, and the council didn't report. They did a paper, they listed, and then we backed out on the 23rd. Typically, we have price locked in the rates. It was either through the Monday or the day of meetings on Tuesday. So we look at possibly doing that Monday plan, or anyway, we see how the market looks. And then we bring it to council that evening. And then finds off per the calendar, it takes three or four weeks in the state of Texas when we issue debt. Through the attorney general, that process. Once we have attorney general approval, we get a flow of around 80,000 persons. So that's when the funds will be delivered to the city. And then we have a similar package for the 40-year amortization. Really, the only difference is the repayment term and the amounts. Your payable monitors, but those payment on the end of it, it's less. Like I said, this is really just a initial step. So you need to go through the ready process to get that part of the process. So that's something that would occur.
Okay, Eric. Any questions for Eric?
When would this debt become callable or be able to make payments in advance?
We're assuming at nine years in this case. Typically, it's nine, eight, nine, ten years. Are you just standard or do you have any shorter? It's going to be a higher interest rate. But the numbers you show here at the city are based on a nine-year. So you'd have the option to retire early at that time.
That's on either 30 or 40?
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Well, I have a question for Brian. On the schedule, the Tuesday, May 23rd, does that involve a public hearing? Is a public hearing required for notice?
No, ma'am. Just the notices in the newspaper are required, and on the city quit. I thought you mentioned.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I have tickled to make sure that that goes up on our website on Friday as it would print. Are you all printing Thursday? What's his name, Robert?
Rick. Are you all going to press on Thursday or Friday?
We usually press while our deadline's Wednesday night. We send it over, so Thursday.
Thursday.
Even this week with.
Yeah, so we'll put it up on our website on Thursday.
But no public hearing? Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Do you have another question?
No, not for Eric. I assume you're going to present how it affects the budget.
The paper comes out on Friday, so.
Okay.
I just didn't know since it was a hall, Thursday, I mean, Friday's been Friday today. So if you guys would.
No, that is a good question, but I haven't heard anything of the current ranking. So I'll tell you what, I will ask a couple of double checks tonight. And Brian, that is.
I think we have a notice to you tomorrow pending council approval. I think we're ready to go on it, so. Leah asked about, Leah wanted to know, and of course, we do this typically with all of our general fund bonds. And so I've given you guys some information. It's a little different, as Leah pointed out this afternoon. It's a little different than what you all seen in the past. You all should have all of these in your deal. I apologize, we didn't have this finalized till about 3:30. And so you're just getting literally the raw sheets that come off my computer. And I can fancy them up if you need it to. The first page, it says our current debt total is $1,955,442. That's slightly different than what Eric just presented for this purpose. The leases and the GovCap and the ladder truck, those debts were paid off by the ESD. And so we made those payments last week. And so that lowered our threshold for this year. So if you add no other debt for the next couple of months in this fiscal year, your current debt total is $1,955,442. When you add in the city hall debt, which would be $553,000, that comes out to $2.5 million, $8,442. So that's a pretty big number. But there's a couple of things that we've already baked into the cake, if you will, as far as related to expenses on the books right now that's related to this or that we'll get. Tax notes, payments for 2024. We are expecting a surplus this year, as you guys know. With the 1.4 coming off the books, the fire station, we will have some room for maneuvering, if you will, in the budget. We are proposing to pay off the tax notes, 2018A and 2018 and 2018A. We're looking to pay those notes off. That'll be an expense this year and an expense next year. Budgeted rental expense. So we already have $200,000. The rent is 140, but we have CAM. We have other things baked into that cake, if you will. And so that cost comes out to about $200,000. Actually, it's a little bit over, but for round numbers, it's $200,000. And then finally, the lease income from the current tenants is about $100,000 a year. My understanding, I have not seen the leases. My understanding is those leases expire in 2026. One expires in July of '26, the other one expires in December of '26. So you will get some rental income for that. So when you take those three numbers, that comes out to $600,000. You back that off of your debt total of 2.5 for an adjusted total of $1.9 million. You'll see an interest and sinking levy of $2 million, which gives you a delta of about $95,000. The $2 million, don't worry about that. And I'll tell you, because when we get in the subsequent pages, I'll tell you why all my spreadsheets are disconnected to each other. Y'all are kind of getting budgeting 101. Second page is the top sheet. You will see this in your budget at some point. Jake and I have tortured these numbers for the last couple of days. Your MNO tax is $1,480,000. That's significantly down. That was a reflection of the tax rate getting lowered. Sales tax is $2.25 million. That is a reflection of our projections. And then we have relatively small increases in revenues for development, court, and other franchise fees. If you notice, I have the lease income from one, from El Chico in here at $100,000. Also have a transfer of water overhead, franchise fees and whatnot over here as well. We've never really billed for that. We've always had a building that was paid for. And so now we're going to move some money from the water fund. Again, $100,000 was a nice round number. We'll figure out the calculation. But the really exciting part comes, so that gives you about $5,023,000 in revenues. But your expenses are going to drop. In fact, they're going to drop 14% total. Even though your admin is going to go up 5%, development's going to go up 20%. That's a function of development, just for purposes of this spreadsheet, absorbing the Fire Marshal's office. That's going to get hashed out later. You've got 5% expenses. City services is eight. That's where that $200,000 is budgeted. But that's not, you're going to look at that, and you're going to say that's not a $200,000 increase. I'll get to that here in a second. Obviously, we no longer have a fire expense. Your PD expense has a 5% increase. We're going to create a line item, transfer from interest and sinking. That's your $300,000 for the tax notes. Parks will be budgeted at $150,000. Parks was in the city services budget. So when you take out what we had budgeted for the $200,000, there's a little bit of a wash there. Also, city services also is for where fuel for the fire department was budgeted. So we'll have a significant savings there. Turns out, if you don't have to gas up a fire truck, you're in pretty good shape. Despite all that, you still have a delta of approximately $610,000. So when I say that this is, the next two budgets are going to be transitory. They're not going to be the way we functioned before. I said this when the election was going on. I said it when the election passed, and I'll say it again now. You can simply not take a million and a half dollars out of your budget and not have it impacted in some way. And typically, this is going to be for the good. And so, anyway, she wanted to see, Leah asked how that impacted your budget. That's it. Some of it's going to come to MNO, and then we'll have, for the first time ever, you're going to transfer some funds from MNO to interest and sinking to help pay down debt faster. That may, I think that's a good thing, but maybe if y'all have some comments on that, that's fine as well. Here's your worksheet. Everybody wants to know if we can still hit the 14 cents. We're still there. I'm assuming a 10% increase in our value, which is our taxable non-frozen value. This is the same spreadsheet I've used for the last five years. So it's pretty accurate. What we did was we lowered the MNO rate by 14 cents. And we increased the interest and sinking rate by a penny, and that gets you your 14. I can drill down to better numbers as the budget season progresses. But for sake of argument, I just penny up, penny down, and just, that's why you see that delta of 20,000 on interest and sinking. Jake asked the question today, because I figured Leah would ask it too. What happens if your values don't come in at 10%? So I ran the model at 5% growth, and we still hit. So even if you had a 5% growth in this year's value, which I don't see happening anywhere, you're still going to be able to make the targets that we've asked for, that y'all have asked for.
Fantastic.
The last page, Mr. Mayor. The 1048, 323, you'll see that number back on the MNO section of page two. The $2,400,000, you'll see that on the front page for your debt with your $23,000 delta on the side. Is that clear as much?
Clear as much. So if we wanted to attack some more road projects, this is either taking that delta that we're seeing on page one or kicking the can down the road, so to speak?
Yes, sir. You could, you could, and I said this when it came out. If you want to dedicate so many hundreds of thousands, because $100,000 is not going to give you anything, but if you want to dedicate funds to road projects, you could certainly do that, because most of the arterials have been addressed. There are a few that, if we want to turn them into arterials for concrete purposes, we certainly can. But as things stand today, a majority of your road improvement will be reconstruction, which is a lot more cost-effective and a lot less expensive than putting out.
Right. So we got one major road along the west side of the golf course. It's going to, it's a, you know, I think it's.
That's Squaw Creek.
Top of everybody's list of getting rebuilt. So that one's probably going to have to be, you know, just throwing $100K out of the year. I don't know, you know, we're going to have to attack it.
You're going to have to be, yes. I will say this. With the departure of the fire department in the budget, you have the ability to do, because of what it does, and with paying down the debt earlier, you're bringing the debt cliff closer to you. I don't know what that number is tonight, but I plan to have that number, hopefully by next week, or certainly by the end of April. Because when we paid off, the fire truck alone was, what, $250,000? The ladder truck?
2017 was $224,000, and the ladder truck was $122,000.
But annual payments were about?
Annual payments, yes.
About $250,000. So you're bringing that delta, it's getting wider between '26 and '27.
So when do we start putting together, not we, you, when do you and your team start putting together your budget for next fiscal year? Is it in June?
So I'll get a preliminary number from the appraisal district by the end of this month, April 30. That'll give me a good indication of what, if that 10% number is accurate or not. I'll get with our staff probably May, the first of May, and start putting together their budget requests. I've already had some of those conversations already. And then I will start putting the budget together late in May, June, and then present it to you guys in July for review. And then we'll figure out the adoption schedule this summer.
Okay. So I know this is getting out of order and getting off topic, but you know, for the.
It's all budget-related, so.
For the next budget session, I'd like to see what Squaw Creek, putting it in as a project to be completed starting next fiscal year, what the impact would, that would be on our budget? And if we can still achieve the reduction and get that project underway.
I think I had requested, not at a council meeting, that we had a kind of an overall roads discussion as part of the budgeting process. One of the things that, I think, looking at Squaw Creek specifically, since you brought it up, the engineering design is going to be pretty significant time and cost. So it's probably smart to get that in the budget sooner. And then that will give us the idea of what we need to budget for construction. But it's not as simple as the however many linear feet that we've been doing on some of our calculations. So budgeting to pay for the engineering upfront might be smart.
You could certainly do that.
Yeah.
And we will have, I think I talked to Brian and Leah both, we'll have some workshops before the meetings in June or July before the budget, we complete the budget. We'll have some workshops before, maybe 4 o'clock or something like that. We'll discuss that later. Any other questions?
What's the timeline to close once funded?
So assuming it's 30 days after we issue notice, that'd be June 23rd. Probably we could close within the next, I'd say, 10 days. Just kind of depends on their schedules, when they want to do it. I want to put one more caveat in. It's the same caveat I've given for the last five years. These are all assumptions. So, I mean, we won't be playing with real numbers for a couple of more months. But we do, the only solid number we have is the 30-year payback based off of your calculation, even that's an assumption on the interest rate. So. But based on all the facts that we have today, we feel confident about this.
Do we have a motion, please?
That would be my final question, is the resolution.
I have a suggested motion from the city attorney. You want me to give it to you, or you don't want to?
I will move to approve a resolution approving all matters incident and related to the issuance. Now he referred me to this. All matters incident related to approving, authorizing publication and posting of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation in an amount not to exceed $8.5 million for the purpose of paying contractual obligations to be incurred for acquiring, renovating, improving and equipping an existing building for public safety facilities, judicial facilities, a city hall and municipal facilities for administrative offices for city departments responsible for designated infrastructure, including streets, roads, parks, water and wastewater utilities, information technology systems, and cybersecurity and various other city departments, and professional services rendered in connection with such projects and financing thereof including the adoption of this resolution.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any other questions or discussion?
I'd say the only thing I'd say is we've been working on a city hall for a long time, trying to figure out what we're going to do. This comes to us as a great situation of being able to purchase more space than we need now with leases, that the space is leased out. So it allows us to grow without having to add on and do construction later. So I'm very happy that this fell into our laps.
So am I.
Good job, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries, I know almost hit the. Mayor comments. I think it's a monumental day in the city. We've been talking about city halls since I got elected in 2017. We're in '23. So I'd like to thank Mr. Grimes, the staff, Leah, the council, for making this happen. It'll be something the citizens will be proud of for many years to come. And I'd like to thank everyone who had a part in it. Any other council comments?
I want to thank you, Doyle, for leading the charge on this. Appreciate all your hard work, so.
You're welcome.
Big step forward.
Big step forward. Mr. Grimes.
On behalf of the staff, thank you for taking the first step. We're still not there yet, until May 23rd will be the day. But thank you. May 23rd will be the day, but thank you. The morale of this building is tremendously high, as it has been since the day we moved here, and we're excited about it. We're excited about the new opportunities, and this is a big day.
Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Meeting is adjourned. What time is it?